Alexis Hill, Chair.
Here.
Jean Herman, Vice Chair.
Here.
Mike Clark. Marius Garcia.
Here.
Clara Andriola.
Present.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Nate Edwards from our DA's office.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galassini, your County Clerk. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. We'll now move into Item Three, Public Comment. Manager Brown.
Item Three, Public Comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission's agenda. The Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole in virtual public comment eligible when facilities are available.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Terry Brooks, followed by Troy Regas.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks again. And today, I'd like to address following the money when it comes to homelessness. It seems that mostly rich people own most of the real estate, while the poor own very little of the real estate. So it's the poor who pay a lot of rent, and it's the rich who collect a lot of rent. Most food stores and restaurants are owned by wealthy people, while a very few are owned by poor people. So in some cases, it's the poor who pay for the food, while a lot of rich people make profits from the food. A lot of big businesses are owned by wealthy people, while the lowest-paid workers are mostly poor people. So when people become unemployed, the rich employers save more money, but it's the poor unemployed who lose a lot of money. And it's the wealthy areas where there are the best schools, but in the poor areas, there are not the best of schools. Poor young people can't afford to go to college, while the wealthy people can afford to buy their kids' way into college. It's the poor people who can't afford good health, but the wealthy people can because of their wealth. It's the wealthy people who own and can sell medications, while the poor can't afford to buy such medications. Very few wealthy people suffer from forms of mental illness, but a lot of people who are poor suffer from forms of mental illness. The rich don't have to worry about being mentally stable, but the poor don't feel so positive because they are not able. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today and for not charging me for saying what I will say.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like I'm going to be back here reading my poems for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Troy Regas, followed by Drew Rebar.
Good morning, Commission, and thank you. Last Wednesday, October 2nd, I attended the South Trucking Meadows Washoe Valley Citizens' Advisory Board meeting. I was surprised at the number of residents living in South Reno who attended the meeting to air their concerns regarding a $40 million unsolicited proposal that was brought forth by Wendy Demonte. Speaking for the Four Our Founds Foundation, the nonprofit was pushing for an outdoor soccer stadium and training facility at the South Valley Regional Park on Wedge Parkway. In July 24, Washoe County Open Space and Regional Park Commission voted unanimously to reject the stadium proposal in the South Valleys Regional Park after significant community opposition. The residents are still concerned because the Four Our Founds Foundation can appeal the Commission vote, and they worry this is not being appealed until after the general election. Why do residents worry? Commission Hill, Garcia, and Androla will not go on the record if they will support this facility or not. They do not do the do-si-do around the issue because it hasn't been appealed. Now, I call that unkind and unsettling. Why not be put residents, you know, voters, minds at rest and let them know where you stand? A lot of these people who spoke at the cab are elderly. Commission Hill speaks of her mom and dad all the time, so she is okay treating elderly residents poorly, keeping them concerned and in the dark purposely. Hey, folks, if you elect me in '26 to the District Three Commission seat, I will be for the people, by the people. I promise I will always be upfront and honest with you, as the three Commissioners who are not on the record about the soccer stadium should be. Tomorrow, Commissioner Hill and Marsha Burke Bigler have a Citizen Forum at the Sierra View Library at 4:00 PM at Town Hall. I urge all South Reno's to attend and ask the whole lot of questions of Commission Hill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Drew Rebar, followed by Roger Edwards.
Good morning, Drew Rebar. For the record, please maintain my comments on the record, NRS 241. As we talked about last night, Mike. Anyways, I've been going to a lot of meetings here lately. A lot of people have been showing up. Recent cab meeting, South Valleys Library, a lot of people there. A lot of people last night, Mike had a meeting with his constituents, 40 to 50 people showed up there. There's a lot of community interest on what's going on. And what I find, I don't know if you guys ever get emails from the people that watch my videos, they send me copies, they say they sent to you, so I get a few of them. What I find is people just want to be heard. People want to know what's going on in their communities. People don't want to feel like they're taken advantage of. The way this county is running, there's some of you up there that are failing. Found out last night that some people down the road from us, the county recently renamed their street, but they didn't tell them that they renamed their street, didn't give them any input, they just renamed the street. And it's rather suspicious, this is just one example of things that were brought up. The street evidently had some covenants on it, and you couldn't make the street go through to another street because some covenants existed, and so the supposition was the county's just renaming the street, that way the covenants are gone. Why would the county do that to the people that live there? Unless somebody's going to make some money? Some government employees corrupt? How come you guys represent all of these big builders instead of the constituents that live in your districts? So many questions, yet there's no answers from our government. There's three of you up there in the middle that consistently vote against the people and more for these huge construction companies and these huge projects. Then you got County Manager Eric Brown over there. I'm naming names, Alexis, yes, I am. His wife doesn't get prosecuted.
No personal attacks of our staff, sir.
I'm just stating facts.
No personal attacks, I'm happy to hear your critique of Washoe County.
I'd like my time back.
Please continue on, no personal attacks.
My time, my manner, my place, my three minutes. Anyways, he recently either fired the registrar of voters, the statement was, you know, she had some mental disorder. Why would you put out personal health information about one of your employees? Aren't there laws about that? Isn't that rather discriminatory? Mr. Edwards, isn't that an issue if you got the county manager putting out personal health information to employees?
Please address the full board, Mr. Rebar.
I'm talking to your attorney, goddammit.
No, please address the full board and do not...
I'll address you any hell I want.
Sir.
Roger Edwards, followed by Nicholas St. John.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Good morning, fellow public servants. My name is Roger Edwards, 50-year resident of Washoe County, 37-year Air Force veteran. I got a bill the other day for some, uh, that stuff they talk about all the time, diabetics have to take, I forgot the name of it right off the hand, but anyway, I got a bill for it, and after serving 37 years, I got a bill for one little vial. It was supposed to be 35 bucks. Mine was $58. Must be because I'm in the upper income bracket, I guess. Anyway, I also want to thank you guys. I got another late notice on my water recharge bill. It's been shut down for eight years now. I have to keep training myself to say eight years instead of seven like I have for the last seven years. Anyway, I'd like to comment about one of our previous speakers, Mr. Brooks, who I love his poems dearly. I'm so old, I have to hire people to do my yard work. I tried to hire some people off the street, and they wouldn't work for $15 an hour, rake and leaves. They wanted $20 an hour, or they left my truck in the middle of the street. You know, it's all about your attitude, folks. $15 an hour, I didn't make $15 a day when I first started working. Also, I'm a member of the North Valley CAB, and I've been on a cab continuously, more or less, since January of 2000. That's what you get when you get old, you've been, got some history to roll up. But I'd like to also comment that, once again, the North Valleys Cab Meeting has been canceled. It's hard to argue that you're interested in public comment when you shut off public meetings. I mean, the cab is the closest to the communities of any group we have around here. And unless somebody's dead or dying, I can't see why we would cancel a meeting with five members. We have a chair and a vice chair. Somebody could run the meeting, it's like this board. You have a chair and you have a vice chair. Somebody could run the meeting if one of you were not here. So come on, folks, please look into that. North Valleys CAB was canceled again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas St. John, followed by Michael Van Pelt.
All right, here we are again. Nicholas St. John, a non-fictitious, non-corporate entity, a real, living, breathing man. I have in my hand a document for a criminal complaint that will be filed against Alexis Hill. So the charges are NRS Code 207.190 coercion. Number one, it is unlawful for a person with the intent to compel another to do or abstain from doing an act which the other person has a right to do or abstain from doing. Paragraph C, one C, attempt to intimidate the person by threats or force. Number two, a person who violates the provisions of subsection one shall be punished. Paragraph A, where physical force or the immediate threat of physical force is used for a category B felony, by imprisonment in the state prison for a minimum term of not less than one year and a maximum term of not more than six years, and may be further punished by a fine of not more than $5,000. There's more to this, but you'll have time to read it on your own. NRS Code 171.126, arrest by private person. A private person may arrest another one for a public offense committed or attempted in the person's presence when the person arrested has committed a felony, although not in the person's presence, and three, which applies, when a felony has been in fact committed and the private person has reasonable cause for believing the person arrested to have committed it. Alexis Hill, I place you under citizens arrest. You're not to leave this meeting today. I'm asking the sheriff to take you into custody.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Michael Van Pelt, followed by Cliff Nellis.
Good morning. I've lived there 25 years, and a friend of mine travels worldwide, and he would live with me sometimes for a few months here and there. Over the last 20 years, I've got three or four different voting, you name it, as if these were all different people, and they're not. In fact, I was a registered Republican, I was a registered independent, and yet I've been here to the voter registrar and multiple times, and they say they're going to correct it, and they don't do that. I was in there recently, and the simplest of questions, and they don't know. I also looked up the public statute on public records. I know what I read. I've been here several times for, to get the voting records, the actual raw data that comes right from the voting machines. No one seems to know. When I asked who the head of the computer department here was, they didn't see, nobody knows. When I made phone calls, nobody can help me. I got one name, nobody answers the phone. My background is computer science, telecommunications, and electrical engineering. I know a little bit. And yet, the people here, over here at the registrar, they won't delete the records. There's literally at my address, there's three voters. And my friend, he moved to Dallas four years ago, and I told him, and he says he's sent, as a matter of fact, DMV still sends me stuff with his name and his cars there. But for right now, I would just like to be able to look at the raw data for the voting for two years ago, as a matter of fact. No one will help me. When I asked the lady there, she had amnesia, and I just don't understand it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Cliff Nellis, followed by Bruce Foster.
Cliff Nellis, I would like to have my comments entered into the permanent record per NRS. We came here a few weeks ago and read this resolution, which you received a copy of, and I wanted to comment on that further. I'm not working for United Sovereign America, I'm just a volunteer, I want to make that clear. But I want you to realize how serious this matter is. It is not a light thing. Federal election law has certain requirements, and you guys are required to follow the federal election law when there is a federal office being run for. So we got the senator, congressman, and so on. And per these statistics, or this data that they actually got from, you know, the Secretary of State, it's their own data, there's a whole lot of problems, like 221,956 ineligible or uncertain registration violations in the state of Nevada. Now, they didn't have the breakdown for Washoe County. That takes more research and time, but they're going to have that too. But I'm sure a large number of that is in Washoe County also, and actually, one of that's just really amazing is there are 26,907 more votes counted than voters who actually voted. So 26,000 more? And then we know who those people are, there's no names attached. So there's some real problems here, and, you know, we were, on July 9th, you guys did the right thing. And, you know, you follow your conscience, because there are too many problems with the elections here, and look what happened, Carrie Ann Burgess quits, right? Oh, oh, she had medical problems, whatever. This is a very incompetent organization, and it needs to be fixed. We have no confidence in the elections, you know, we're going to ask for a hand count, because we don't believe that the outcome of these computers, they're not machines or computers, is accurate. And, you know, if you remember Scooter Libby back in the Bush days, he outed Valerie Plame, and they caught him what's called the perjury trap. So, you know, you guys can be caught in the perjury trap too, like your DA actually told you the right thing, Mr. Edwards, on July 9th, but then Mrs. Candares came along and told you the wrong thing. If you certify an election that's not sort of viable, then you have committed perjury. And it's a very serious thing, it can mean jail time. So I just want to remind you guys of that, and I would like you to sign this. I mean, it doesn't really matter if you sign it or not, because they are probably going to court.
Thank you.
Bruce Foster, followed by Penny Brock.
Yeah, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bruce Foster, for the record, please mind talk on permanent record, and my pronoun is "we, the people." I wish to continue the narrative from Cliff and speak about trust. At the highest levels, my question is, is that in this room, how many of us trust in Washington the DOJ? How many of us trust the Department of Homeland Security? How many of us trust the CIA? The FBI? The FDA? How about trusting this administration regarding the border? How about foreign policy? Now, two wars going on. How about here at our local level? Can we trust our Washoe County School District in educating our children when they have a plethora of pornography within the school libraries and all the violence that's going on? All the way down to the RPD regarding handling the homeless situation? I just wish to further clarify that I go to people that I trust and I, that are smarter than I am. Regarding the issues with the illegals here that are apparently in the Washoe County and state of Nevada, and Elon Musk quoted, of course, in California, "A new law bans California from requiring voters to show ID at the polls." If there is a Democratic Party in victory in the election, they will ban voter ID requirements nationwide, enabling massive voter fraud. Banning voter ID is their stated goal. They're not hiding it, after that, your vote won't matter. And you can see, I don't see the...
We don't have the projector, I'm sorry. Could y'all help me with the projector?
Well, state of Nevada, now, since 2021, the growth of illegal aliens has grown 734%.
Do you want to push it up a bit, sir?
Or 562%, over, close to 16,000. And then we go to the other issues where the resolution issue. So, you know, people here, there are county commissioners that have problem even on the first one, proof of citizenship. So that's where I go to all the individuals that are now in our country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Penny Brock, followed by Charles Elliott.
Overhead, please. Thank you. Penny Brock, for the record. We are in an election crisis as we enter our election season. The elections manager disappears. The assistant elections department manager is nowhere to be found. George Guthrie is the out front person. How does he have that authority? We don't know. Then in August, we got the new state VREM system, and the elections manager Burgess warned us at the time there would be bumps. Well, last night at the community meeting, we heard our voters talking about the bumps. They called the voter register office to make sure they're registered, and they're told they're too busy to check. This morning, I went on the Secretary of State's website to check, and what did it tell me? It's down for maintenance. How can this be? How can this be? Supposedly, the sample ballots went out October 2nd, but they will be mailed from Arizona because runback, that is printing and mailing both the sample ballots and the mail-in ballots, are in charge. Why didn't you go with a local mailhouse in Sparks like you did with the presidential primary? We know there were problems with the June primary of people getting, their mail-in ballots came first, and then the sample ballots arrived. We've got issues. How are you going to fix this? On October, next week, October 15th, 9:00 AM in the judicial court, the case involving our Carrie Ann Burgess voter register versus the voter rolls will be heard in judicial court. I assume the DA's office is going to represent Carrie Ann Burgess, but we don't know. That is going to be an interesting court case. We know that in May, PLIF out of Washington DC also filed a case against her for the same issue, the voter rolls. That case has not yet been heard. So we're glad this case is going to be heard next week on the 15th, Second Judicial Court, 9:00 AM. So the county commissioners are ultimately in charge of our election system. How can you guarantee us that we are going to get a fair, honest, secure, and transparent...
Charles Elliott, followed by Janet Butcher.
Charles Elliott, please enter my comments in the record. Prior to reading a resolution that we hope will be put on the docket for the 22nd, I've just got a few comments that, again, I've been here for the last couple of years, never got involved before that, stupid for doing that, I should have been involved with this when I was a teenager, or it wouldn't have been this bad. You guys are the board, okay? It won't address any specific person. This board is, it's a shame. I mean, our country is really having a lot of issues, and it's primarily because of graft, greed, ego, you name it, and it's not for the constituents. We, the constituents, give you the jobs by electing you. But with this election and all the elections we've had, I don't know, we could probably go way back, they're horrible. You guys can't keep registrar voters, you can't keep people working. You, it's been proven that there's all kinds of stuff that has been done incorrectly and criminally. It's amazing how you guys continue to get it with, and it's just because of the news media that is not shedding light on this like they should. We've got a great journalism school up here, but it's not a journalism school, it's a propaganda school. We need to get journalists that are hungry to get the facts out, to find out what in the world is going on with our elections, but that's a small portion of our whole county, not just elections. It's a big one, because then we can get you guys out and get somebody in, but that goes without saying. Anyway, let me read the resolution that we'd love to have. Resolution of the Washoe County Republican Party. Now, I'm not speaking in behalf of them. They have not set me aside to say, "Go do this." I am doing this on my own. Whereas, the administration of the elections of Washoe County over the past two elections cycles have been fraught with errors and excessive costs, including, but not limited to, names left off of ballots, incorrect ballot instructions, misprinted ballots, multiple ballots sent to the same address, mail-in ballots... ballots sent to the same address, mail-in ballots sent to voters who opted out of receiving them, failure to verify signatures, and the failure to promptly purge the voter rolls of ineligible voters, resulting in the unbudgeted expenditures and the loss of confidence in the public in the elections process. Therefore, be it resolved that the Washoe County Republican Party petitions the Board of County Commissioners --
Thank you.
Janet Butcher, followed by Joni Hammond.
Good morning, Janet Butcher. Please enter my comments into the record. I'll ask verbatim, but therefore, be it resolved that the Washoe County Republican Party petitions the Board of County Commissioners for Washoe County to abolish the position of Washoe County Registrar of Voters and return the administration of the elections to Washoe County Registrar of Voters, or to the Washoe County Clerk, with all the staff and resources currently assigned to the Registrar of Voters, as was the practice prior to 1973 and is the practice currently in 15 other Nevada counties. I believe you are all in possession of this, and it was asked that you will have it on since 10/15. October 15th has been canceled, another monthly meeting canceled, that you would have it on, put it on the agenda for October 22nd. I know that a lot of you remember the rest of the story. Well, I'd like to kind of start out and tell everybody, I grew up in a lower class environment in the Midwest. I had one pair of shoes I wore for church and for daily. I grew up in America. The person who states that they grew up in a middle-class environment grew up in Quebec, Canada, from the fourth grade until she graduated from high school, and that's Kamala Harris. I can -- I can understand when she says that her mother was, she was in high school when her mother managed to get a house. Same thing here. But we got our house in America, not in Quebec. So, more on the rest of the story. I'm going to have this entered into the record, because there's a lot of misinformation about question number six. And as Kamala Harris stands out there and touts that if you have a miscarriage, you will not be taken care of. Well, I'm standing before you today, or if you go to the hospital and are having a problem, they're going to let you die. That's not true. A miscarriage is not the same as an abortion. And late-term abortion is definitely 100% murder. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joni Hammond, and then we'll go to Incline Village.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Joni Hammond. We have a theme this morning. We're 11 days to early voting, four weeks from the general election day. Some say the most important election in modern history. What has been done at Washoe County elections since the primary? What happened to the 26,000 undelivered ballots that were returned to the ROV? Have the voter rolls been cleaned? How many dead people will vote in the general election? We may never know. We're now switching to a new system with iPads. Will they be faster? Will they work well? Will there be bumps? What is the backup plan? What if the electricity goes out? We wasted 90,000 in county funds in the primary. How much money will we waste during the general election? Another interim registrar of voters is gone. Are you sure we can run a fair, proper election? I'm very concerned about that, and you should be too, because you're in charge of it.
Thank you.
Now, we'll go to Incline Village, and we have Rick Steinberger. And while we're waiting for that, I do have an email to place on the record.
Okay. Can everyone hear me? Is the audio working?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. My name is Rick Steinberger. I'm a 25-year, excuse me, resident of Incline Village, and my background is in risk assessment and remediation. And I have a petition on change.org signed by 80 of my fellow Incline Village citizens asking the Washoe Board of County Commissioners to please begin looking into ways that you can separate e-bike and pedestrian traffic on our sidewalks. The slow signs that someone has had put up, stenciled on the sidewalk and next to them over the summer, as near as I can tell, done absolutely nothing. The problem really is not that the e-bikes are going 10 to 20 miles an hour on the sidewalks. The problem is that the e-bikes themselves are on the sidewalks. So, what I'm asking you is not to solve national politics, not to solve impossible problems, but to please commit to putting this item down as an item you will discuss at a future county meeting, and to please have as an action item, looking into hiring a consultant who can advise you on available options for better separating e-bike and pedestrian traffic on our pretty narrow Incline Village sidewalks. I think if you do this, we will all be safer, "we" meaning citizens of Washoe County that come to Incline Village to enjoy the lake and the heights and all of us who live here. So, I'm hoping that you can commit to making this an item for discussion at a future county commissioner meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Per our agenda, we will take a break until 11 o'clock. Thank you, everyone.
Well, it should be finalized as of, instead of 3/23, it should be finalized in 9/23. Oh, yeah, yes, exactly, till 9/24, yeah, yeah. As a sole agent with that company. So, the paperwork was filed with the state in 9/24 that were officially closed, that business. So, I'm talking, you're talking IRS, I'm talking state of Nevada, so. Yeah. You're right. You're correct. So, now, next year, '24 will be my final filing. Correct. Correct. Yeah. All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. Bye.
Very much.
Hello, everyone, again. It is 11 o'clock, and we'll now move into item four, Manager Brown.
Item four is Commissioners and County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, and topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything for us, Manager?
I do, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I would start by making the announcement that we are declaring an end, declaring an termination of the -- Declaration of Emergency Concerning the Davis Fire.
Okay.
As those operations and activities have wound down. I also have a few updates with regards to the Registrar of Voters Office. As has been mentioned, Carrie Ann Burgess is on leave. She has not been fired. She did not quit. I would say, and I won't make any further comment, because as is our policy, we don't do that on personnel matters. I do want to applaud the efforts of the Registrar of Voters Team, which has come together to step up to take on the tasks in front of them. We also have had unwavering support from Secretary of State's office that has sent us personnel and expertise to help us get the things we need to get done. And I also want to thank many of the other county departments who have sent individuals in to help us, including our very own clerk, the assessor's office, tech services, and the office of the county manager. With that said, we are inviting residents to an election open house in the lobby, right outside these doors, for Thursday afternoon from 4:00 to 6:00. We'll be offering hands-on demonstrations of the new poll pads and voters, the voters will use when signing in if you're voting on, in person. And the staff will be there to answer questions about the upcoming election. Between the primary election and August 6th, our staff in the Registrar's office processed about 27,000 voter registration record updates. We do this for -- We do this for a number of reasons, people moving out of state, people moving into the county, they need to confirm their addresses or election mail is returned as undeliverable. So this is part of the cleaning the voter roll process. Now, in addition to that, we've seen a fairly strong stream of new voter registrations come in for this election that have kept us busy. So in addition to having to transition all the voter records from the old system to the new system, we have additional voter registration requests coming in at the same time. And all of that has served us that we were not able to act on about twenty thousand inactivations at this point. These voters are still active, so they will receive a mail ballot. If they move, the mail ballot will come back to the ROV's offices undeliverable. It's important to note that the mail ballots are not forwarded to other addresses by USPS. They return to us and will be acted on accordingly. Inactive does not mean ineligible to vote. These are not ineligible voters, they just have not updated their information. All right. In addition, but the new system is, so far is working well. It has enhanced tracking and certification capabilities that we didn't have before. So that moving forward, keeping track of voter records is going to be, we'll be able to do that much more accurately than we have in the past. Additionally, voters can expect to see mail ballots hit their mailboxes in the next week or so. Our new mail sorter is being configured for the mail ballot processing. Early voting starts October nineteenth, runs through November first. There are twenty-four early vote center locations across the county, each with mail ballot drop boxes, along with two official standalone mail ballot drop box locations. Election Day, November fifth, will have fifty-five vote center locations across the county. And we will have the deputy ROV here at our next meeting on the agenda to make a presentation and update, which will be October twenty-second. Finally, Madam Chair, there are a couple of board openings I'd like to announce. One is Board of Equalization has two positions. Application closes October seventeenth. And then the Library Board of Trustees has one attorney member and one non-attorney member opening applications, close October thirty-first. And Commission Support, this is a new wrinkle, has asked, has begun summarizing requests that commissioners have made from the dais in terms of where they are. So for the month of September, let's try this. Number one, the requests that have been followed up on, there are six from Commissioner Clark. One was a request that SEAB meet more frequently. That has been conveyed to the SEAB Board Chair, per the SEAB bylaws. There's been a request to take a look at the Reno Justice Court Resource Center and ask that the county publicize their services. RGC staff notified Commissioner Clark that, of the ways they promote the center in various formats. We've ensured, he made an inquiry about the death at the CARES campus. He was provided information by the Housing and Home Services Staff. It was a request with regards to concern of reports and machetes and other activities at the CARES campus and increased patrol. Staff reported the existing security plan for review. He noted that we would like to hold, we would like to hold and film town hall meetings. Staff was told that Commissioner Clark has decided to hold his own town hall meeting and was made, was informed of that decision. And he asked that the Public Defender's Office find more permanent funding as opposed to short-term funding. That matter was referred to the Chief Financial Officer who was working with the Public Defender's Office staff to address that accordingly. Commissioner Garcia made a request to bring an animal spay neuter services item to, back to the board. We're in the process of working on that. And to see if we can use some decommitted ARPA funds. And Commissioner Andriola asked that the CAB reimagine come back at the strategic planning session. So we will be bringing it to, we're not having the planning session on the twenty-ninth, but we will be bringing it to a future BCC meeting. Madam Chair, that's all I have for this.
Thank you, Manager Brown, and Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first wanted to thank all the public speakers for coming in today and not giving up on this board. And we always enjoy hearing what you have to say because that's, that's who we work for. Regarding the cabs, since we kind of decided that we're going to hang on to them, I'd like to keep the cabs that I'm involved with in my district just the way they are, but bring back the development element to the cab because that's their request. It's very important to, to almost every one of them. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Garcia. Thank you. Commissioner Andriola.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of things. One, I obviously have been still working with folks with Hidden Valley in terms of the two-hundred-year flood and really want to thank everyone for their continued support. And obviously, the Davis fire, we're all aware of that. And it made me really step back and think about the possibility of looking, having staff look at the waiving of permit fees or associated fees that, not only for Hidden Valley residents, but for Davis Creek Fire that were impacted. But more importantly, looking at a policy that we could look at when it is an act of God, essentially, that something occurs so that we can provide support in that way. So I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for us to bring that back at a later time and have staff, you know, review it. I also want to give a huge thanks to Kelly Mullen and the staff for the release of the equine business study and the community input. That information has been released, it was released on Friday. There's an opportunity for everyone who is interested in participating in the process as the codes continue to be looked at and reviewed and hopefully come back here at some point. But through that process, folks that are interested in participating can sign up. And so I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. And again, thanks to Kelly Mullen and the team for all their hard work and continued hard work in this process. Lastly, I'd like to recognize Abby Jacobin, Lori Cook, the treasurer and the entire team for their continued work on the transparency piece for the open checkbook. That is continuing to move forward and it looks like there may be, hopefully, the first quarter of 2025, we may see the result along with the request that we had spoke about with having a budget workshop. So we're all looking forward to that. And the commitment by this board and staff for transparency continues to be echoed very deeply and I'd like to thank everybody for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a few things I'd like to discuss, talk about and have questions about. First of all, I'd like to compliment the manager's office and, and having a report done on the record with requests that had been made in past meetings and then sharing those and getting those on the record again and sharing the outcomes and, and the fact that the staff and the county office, manager, manager's office are working on those requests. So I've got some requests from today, so we'll get those on the record. I'll make a quick report on, we had a community meeting last night. We had over fifty people attend. It was filmed, all of it was filmed. It'll be available to review, so anybody can take a look at it. It was a nonpartisan meeting. We didn't allow anybody to talk about anything political there, shut that off. But everyone got four minutes to talk about anything that they wanted to talk about. And so it was some good information for me. I did find out that there's a, there's a street somewhere in District Two. I didn't remember the street. I'll go back and look at the, the video and get the name of the street. But some people reported that their street name was changed and then somebody else reported it was changed back. So I'd like to find out with the process, this is a request now, with the processes of changing street names, how it's done. Do, is there any involvement with the folks who live on the street or is the name just changed? How does that take place? So I can explain to my constituents how a name change might be affected on their street. Next, I had somebody bring up the fact that I know for a fact, is the former assessor, that Washoe Valley is in Washoe County. However, some of the folks have Carson City addresses in Washoe Valley. That's causing problems with their insurance companies, automobile insurance, fire insurance. The, you know, these home offices of many of these insurance companies aren't based here. They don't understand what's taking place in the county. So I'd like to find out from the staff, how is it that many of the addresses in Washoe Valley have Carson City addresses, Carson City zip codes? And I understand that's a United States Post Office designation, the zip codes. But how can we get that straightened out where these folks are considered citizens of Washoe County instead of Carson City? So people have told me that GPS can't find their house because of this. And so I'd just like to get to the bottom of why Washoe Valley has got some, some mixed signals on their addresses and see how that affects us as a county. Again, that was all filmed. And then, you know, people may not know this, but I'm a big fan of National Public Radio, NPR. I've been listening for over forty years. People who know me, by the time I rent a car in an airport, by the time I'm out of the airport parking lot, I've got an NPR station on. I listen to it every morning, several radios in the house are listened, are set on that station. So much of my surprise, I'm in the shower this morning and I hear Commissioner Chair Hill's voice in my restroom, or my bathroom at the house, with her interview. And I thought it was, and I listened to it. I listened to the interview and it made me think of some questions I'd like to ask today. And, you know, she talked about certifying the elections and that's fine, I get that. We've been talking about that for, for months now. But I've got some, some serious questions that I'd like to direct to the manager's staff and the staff here. I'd like to, and the registrar voters, whoever that may be, today, or the acting registrar voters, whoever that may be. We had approximately twenty-five to twenty-six thousand ballots from the primary that came back undeliverable. I'd like to know out of those, and of course, before we get into this, somebody's going to tell me about privacy. So I'm not asking for their name, let's make that clear in this request. I want to know how many of those twenty-five or twenty-six thousand people were contacted by the county and told that their mail was undeliverable at the address they had or the name they were using? How many of those folks were, that were apparently were disenfranchised? Did the county reach out to, to re-enfranchise and give them, give them an opportunity to, to cure their names between the primary election and the general election that we have coming up? How many of those folks were contacted? I'd like to know out of that group, again, not with their name, but how many people, what party affiliations did we have from those folks that were disenfranchised? I'd like to know what precincts that they came from? And I'd like to know what districts in the county they came from? I think that the twenty-six thousand votes that did not get cast because of undeliverable mail could have made the decisions and helped make decisions in the county on many races. In fact, we had, what, three recall races, there were three, not recall, but recount races. I don't know if they would have made a difference in that. So we'll never know that. So I'd like to see a report and I'd like that shared with the news media, out of the twenty-six thousand people that didn't get a ballot, what districts they were in, what parties they were in, what precincts they were in. And I think we can also use that as a learning tool to get better at the registrar voters' office and, and study the problem. If you're, if you're running a corporation, you're running a business, you're running an organization and you make mistakes, you study those things and then you figure out how to do better. So I don't know if there's been a study, but if there is, I like the results and if there hasn't been one, I'd like it to be done. I understand you're busy, we might have to wait till after the election, but it still should be looked into why this took place. And when certain county officials are doing interviews on radios and talking about certifying elections, how can you in good conscience certify an election where you knew twenty-five, twenty-six thousand folks never got their ballot? Just a question. Also on national news, it's a big issue. And so I've got a question about BDR requests. I don't know if we've passed that time to, to talk about this, but I'd, I'd like to see if we can get that back on the agenda to talk about some BDR requests. There's a big, it's a big Supreme Court case now about ghost guns. These are guns that aren't registered. These are guns that don't have serial numbers. These are guns that don't have to go through the proper channels. And so I thought, you know, something along the same lines, very, very close to this is, is the use of employees and staff and elected officials using devices other than the county's devices, using burner phones to contact each other, written messages versus emails. So I think that all business, all county business should be conducted on county devices. And that way we've got public records in the future. So that would be a request that I'd like to see as an agenda item to discuss whether we could have a BDR that would address those issues. And I think that's it. I'll, one last comment about Michael Van Pelt talks about, you know, I've talked about this for, for years. I've got somebody that is registered with their, their driver's license at my house because they are still a US citizen. They still come back and get their taxes prepared here. They still pay taxes as a US citizen and they have a driver's license and they've been to the registrar voters. I've brought it up, the Secretary of State and I have talked about it. And yet I still see, you know, paperwork from the registrar voters and now the Secretary of State coming to my house for somebody who lives in Australia for the last eight years. So I'd like to get more information about that. How many other folks are getting, are still on the rolls that obviously are not here anymore? They don't, they're, they're, they've asked to be removed and the DMV continues to put these people back on the rolls. So we've got to figure out a way to, to not let just anybody who gets a license be considered a registered voter if they're, that they're not here. So that's, those are my requests. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Herman, were you, did you have anything else?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just thought we were getting, you know, on in the meeting, so. But I, I just wanted to let Commissioner Clark know that where I live is north of Spanish Springs and we're called Reno, the Mayo. So it is confusing, I understand that.
Thank you. I have one item. We at the Truckee Meadows Fire District are holding an evening of gratitude to support the incredible response that all of our first responders had to the Davis fire. This is Tuesday, October fifteenth. It's from six to seven, the doors open at five. There won't be a Reno Aces ballgame that night. It will be an opportunity for you to meet firefighters and other first responders that supported the Davis fire. The concession stands will be open and the GSR and MV Energy have generously donated fireworks for that night. So fireworks will be going off in honor of our first responders at seven PM. And we'll be supporting the Nevada Pierce. And we'll be supporting the Nevada Peer Support Network, the United Way of Northern Nevada, and the Red Cross of Nevada, as well as the Firefighters Foundation. So come and show your generosity for these organizations and incredible first responders in our community. With that, if there's no other comments, I'll move on to donations. And Commissioner Garcia, if you could help us with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have moved to approve a donation from two local attorneys who regularly volunteer for the Lawyer in the Library program, which is a great community resource, as well as cash and various supplies, dog and cat food from the SPCA, Petco Sparks, Renown Imaging, and the K.T. Grace Foundation, and many constituents who generously gave to animal services.
Wonderful. Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'm looking for a second on donations.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this?
There's nobody signed in on either item.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. We'll now move into our consent items. And I don't see my green sheet, but Manager Brown, there was an item that staff wanted to... Thank you. Okay, never mind. I found it. It was, it's six I-1.
One, yes.
Okay, per the sheriff's office.
Yes.
Okay. So we will pull that item, per the sheriff's office. And then is there any other questions or comments from the board on the consent? And I'm not seeing that there is. Madam Clerk, it looks like we have two public commentators.
We do. First up, we have Brian Beffert, followed by Roger Edwards.
And we need the projector, please.
Testing?
Yes.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Manager Brown, Commissioners. My name is Brian Beffert, Sustainability Manager for Washoe County. And I'm just here to grab a couple minutes to talk about the benefits of one of the grants I hope you will be accepting today. This is item 61, the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant. Lots of people have heard about the Inflation Reduction Act and other federal investments to help address climate change. This grant is one example. And so this sheet that I have here shares some of the benefits of energy efficiency upgrades that this grant will allow the county to do. This money will help us replace 908 light bulbs in the Court South Tower, Mills Lane Court Building, with LEDs. This will cut our power use in half. And, and because these, these light bulbs last for 20 years on average, maybe not on average, but expected up to 20 years, they can save tremendous amounts of energy and operations and maintenance through this work. The emissions that we expect to avoid from these light bulb switch outs is about 20 metric tons of emissions per year. This will save the county roughly $45,000, almost $46,000 in energy bills over 20 years. And the value of those avoided emissions will be about $4,500 per year, up to about $89,000 over 20 years. Both of those figures are a little off. The $45,000 is at 2024 rates. And so if electricity rates can rise, that savings will increase. And as NV Energy reduces the electricity they produce from fossil fuels, that $89,000 may decline. But in general, this is just one example of how these investments can both clean the air and save people money on electric bills. And I look forward to making similar investments on behalf of the county in the future.
Thank you.
Good morning again, Roger Edwards, for the record. Please enter my comments into the permanent record. I'm up here to talk about 6B-1. But first, I need to correct my earlier testimony. Apparently, the cab meeting for North Valleys has not been canceled. It was rescheduled for next month, or next week. So I'm sorry if I misspoke earlier. But I want to talk about 6B-1. And this, we see on the agenda routinely that the commission is ready to approve the rolls that a tax collector uses in our county. You know, 490,000 approximate residents in Washoe County. Not all pay taxes, but most of them do. I certainly do. And I'm concerned that, such as Commissioner Clark has mentioned before, that we're so concerned about our voter rolls being accurate, why don't we merge these rolls and come up with something that's really current? The tax collector works on his rolls all the time. If we could merge those rolls with the voter rolls, we should have a much better voter roll. Okay? So I would like to see that put in there. And I have to admit, it's like Commissioner Clark mentioned, that I'm just dazzled that the county manager is responding to you guys' requests. You know, you've been up there requesting things forever. Matter of fact, my first meeting in one of these things was in November of 1974. And I've heard you guys request things every meeting with no response from the county manager. He works for you guys. But he's a direct contact with us out in the county. And I see him at our cab meetings all the time. I really applaud that. That's where you really get to hear what your neighbors are concerned about. But like Commissioner Clark has been saying forever, if we could merge these rolls, we would have a better voter roll. Okay? Thank you very much.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. With the pulling of item 6I-1, I am looking for a motion on consent.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola, looking for a second. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any questions on the consent motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll now move to our block vote. I look to Vice Chair Herman to help us with that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pull 13 off of this block vote, and I'm going to list the ones that I believe should be on it.
Okay.
Seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12.
Thank you very much. Well, with the block vote for items seven through 12, and a motion, correct, by Vice Chair Herman?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Looking for a second from the board? Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, any public comment on any of those items?
I have Penny Brock signed in for both item eight and nine.
Penny Brock, for the record. As you will see, both eight and nine pertain to contracts issued by Washoe County. Now, in the NRS, it says that anything, any contract over 100,000 and more is to be voted on by the county commissioners. However, there was a change made in the rules and procedures of Washoe County a couple years ago that allows the contracts manager to do this, as well as the county manager. Well, one of the things that I've noticed is if it's going to go over $300,000, what they merely do is break up the contract. So it doesn't, you know, breach that 300,000. So we've got an issue here about breaking up the contracts. Number one. Number two, we, the taxpayers, still want any contract over $100,000 to be brought before the county commissioners. We need that accountability. There's nowhere we can go online to find out what all the different contracts are for, or the amounts. And that's not right. We need transparency. All this does is shut down transparency to the taxpayers. It shuts down the transparency to you as the county commissioners. That should concern you because you are ultimately accountable for how the money's being spent. Are they breaking up the contracts? That's a huge issue. There is no accountability. So I would ask you to consider doing something about eight and nine, to bring it in line so that you will be apprised and vote on any contract $100,000 or more. We, the taxpayers, would really appreciate that. And I would think that you might be able to sleep a little better at night, knowing that you have done your job per NRS. This thing about it being voted on to be put in the Washoe rules and procedures, I think that's questionable legally even. Because NRS says 100,000 or more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody else has signed in on either item?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a motion on the block by Vice Chair Herman, a second by Commissioner Garcia. Any questions from the board on that? Seeing none? Oh, yes. Vice Chair Herman.
I was wondering if our legal gentleman over here could explain that last commenter's statement regarding the costs.
May I have a few seconds here to just pull something up?
Yes. We'll put on the Jeopardy music for you.
Where do I write down the? What I believe the relevant statute here is in Chapter 245. It's 245-070. Says, "No county officer in any county in this state, except the Board of County Commissioners, shall contract for the payment or expenditure of any county monies for any purpose whatever, or shall purchase any stores, materials, goods, wares, or merchandise, or contract for any labor or service, whatever, except the Board of County Commissioners, or a majority of it, shall order such officer to do the same." I view the ordinance changes and your, and/or your rules of procedure to be forms of direction, order by this board to designate a county staff to carry out those purchases. Currently, that level's set at 300,000. The board could choose a different amount. That discussion was already had, but as of right now, it's 300,000. And then these are the ones that are, over time, are going to end up going over that amount. So the process now, as they come back, they inform the board about that situation. I will say also that no matter what number you pick, you will end up with that reality. If you pick 100,000, then you'll have items like this coming back saying, these are the ones that are now expected to go over 100,000. If you pick 500,000, the same thing will happen. It'll just be a different cutoff point. Obviously, the big factor is how many of them are coming back to the board. But right now, you are set at 300,000.
Thank you. DA Edwards, do you have any other questions, Vice Chair?
No, thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the block. Any other questions from the board? I'm not seeing any. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And the motion passes unanimously. We'll now move into item 13. Manager Brown?
Item 13 is a recommendation that the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners approve the renewal of the annual software license fee for Dominion Voting Systems hardware and software used by the Registrar of Voters' Office under the ongoing contract signed in June, on June 29, 2017, in the amount of $389,785.25.
Thank you very much. And Vice Chairman, did you have particular questions? Or do you want a staff presentation on this item?
No, just go ahead and run the vote.
Okay. Any other board members have questions on this item? I'm not seeing that anyone does. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Penny Brock has signed in to speak.
Thank you.
Penny Brock?
Apologize for that. Number 13, that pertains to renewing the contract, the annual license fee for Dominion Voting Systems. I take great issue with this. Why do you continue to give us, the voters, the Dominion Voting System? There's lawsuits all over the country about problems with Dominion Voting System. Robert Beatles has filed a lawsuit. It's gone to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court is taking a look at it. The DA's office has to respond by October 28 of this year. So this is very serious. I would ask that you not renew this contract. I would ask that you look at another way for us to vote. We want to vote by paper ballots and hand count. France and many countries had done mail-in ballots and voting machines, and they found there was so much corruption. They have returned to paper ballots and hand counting. That is what we want. You cannot guarantee us with this election, with this Dominion Voting System, which includes the tabulation, that we are going to get a fair, honest, secure, and transparent election. Again, I would ask you not to renew this contract because you need to take a serious look at this Dominion Voting System. I was going to bring the code that Dominion has, that anybody, anybody with this code can access, the Dominion Voting System. That includes our voting office down the hall. This is very serious. So I would ask you not to pass this and to take another look at 2020. This is about next year. How many elections are we really going to have? If there happens to be some kind of an election, it's going to be like happened earlier this year up in the North Valleys. It will be very few ballots. Those can be paper ballots and hand counted. You've got time to do this right. So I would ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I am looking to any other board members who may have comments or questions. I'm not seeing that anyone does. I am looking for a motion on item 13.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the renewal of the annual software license fee agreement for the Registrar of Voters with Dominion Voting Systems, as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. I'm looking for a second. I will do the second. With a motion and a second, any questions on that or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes three to two, with Vice Chair Herman and Commissioner Clark in the opposition. We'll now move on to our public hearing. And I will ask, Manager Brown, are you going to lead us into that, the public hearing?
Yes. Item 14 is a public hearing of a master plan, a master plan amendment case number WMPA 24-0003 and Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA 24-0005 York. Consideration of the Planning Commission's recommendation to number one, adopt amendments to the Washoe County Master Plan, Southwest Truckee Meadows Master Plan Land Use Map WMPA 24-0003, to change the master plan land use designation for plus or minus 13.8 acre portion of a plus or minus 14.5 acre parcel, APN 041-051-59, from rural... 13.8 acre portion of a plus or minus 14 and 1/2 acre parcel, APN 041-051-59, from rural to rural residential, and if approved, authorize the chair to sign a resolution, resolution to this effect. And, number two, subject, subject to final approval of the associated master plan amendment and a finding of conformance with the Trucking Meadows Regional Plan by regional planning authorities, recommend adoption of an amendment to the Southwest Trucking Meadows Regulatory Zone map to change the regulatory zoning from 13.8 acre portion of a 14 and 1/2 acre parcel, APN 041-051-59, for general fund, GR one unit per 40 acres, to 7.1 acres of high-density rural, HDR one unit per 2 and 1/2 acres, and 6.7 acres of open space. And if approved, authorize the chair to sign a resolution to this effect. And, number three, subject to a finding of conformance with the Trucking Meadows Regional Plan by the regional planning authorities to approve a resolution, a resolution sponsoring an amendment to the 2019 Trucking Meadows Regional Plan to change the land designation of the subject parcel from Tier 3 to Tier 2. This, the site is located at 70 Bear Mountain Place. The Board of County Commissioners may adopt the proposed amendments, may modify the proposed master plan amendment, and refer the matter back to the Planning Commission for its report in accordance with NRS 278.220, Section 4, or may deny the proposed amendments after the public hearing.
Thank you, Manager Brown. And does the board want to see a staff report on this item? I'm looking to see. It's not really looking like anyone does. Okay. This is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public. Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Catherine Reichenberg, followed by Penny Brock.
Good morning, County Manager, Madam Commissioners, and Mr. Commissioner. Catherine Reichenberg, on behalf of the Island Trust, the owner of two of the four parcels adjacent to the subject property. Island Trust objects to the proposed amendment because the amendment is not in substantial compliance with the master plan, which was designed to evoke a pastoral sensibility in a suburban setting. Bear Mountain subdivision has four large rural lots, each with a single home allowed. The subdivision is only accessible through a locked gate on a private road. There is no good basis to have a variance to change the pastoral rural character and nature of the Bear Mountain subdivision as created and as implemented by the master plan. All parties purchased the property with the knowledge of the master plan. These lots are large and pastoral on purpose. The owners off of Bear Mountain purchased them for space and tranquility. 75% of the lot owners in Bear Mountain object to this amendment. That will only benefit one property owner in Bear Mountain. You do not get an amendment as a matter of right. The master plan was developed to preserve and protect the stability and character of rural properties, and the amendment is not in substantial compliance with those objectives. Furthermore, the amendment does not respond to changed conditions, nor does it represent a more desirable utilization of the land. This is not low-income or high-density housing. This amendment would provide for one high-cost lot to become available, which does not respond to the county's need for more affordable and workplace housing. The benefit of this amendment would be to one owner seeking to sell a portion of rural land for profit, to the detriment of the character and nature of the surrounding parcels and other members of the county. The proposal furthermore does not demonstrate that there are adequate facilities to the proposed new property site. Specifically, the application states that Tamwa does not supply water and states that someone could apply potentially for a well. Further, it is unclear how the lot will be accessed. The traffic and accessibility issue has not been resolved or fully funded and investigated. In sum, the proposed amendment to the master plan and regional plan is to the detriment of Washoe County, the adjacent residents off of Bear Mountain, and others. This amendment only benefits the petitioner at the expense of the stability and pastoral character of the area that the residents purchased and enjoy. Further, there are substantial outstanding questions regarding utilities and accessibility. In sum, the master plan adoption should not be, should be denied. Thank you.
Penny Brock?
Thank you.
Penny Brock, for the record. Well, thank goodness that Commissioner Clark had that community meeting for us last night because we heard from the people in Washoe Valley and what this change is all about. Seems the developers are coming into our area, South Reno, to change this code. I sat through the hearings on the master, the new master plan, and we were assured there would not, there would not be any amendments. And yet, there are amendments being made out in District Number Two. So what we heard from our fellow citizens is that they're changing what we appreciate about South Reno is that we have, we are unique in that we've got rural settings. We do not want it changed from rural to, what do they call it? It's more like a suburban whatever, and then into the city. We want it to stay the way it is. So I think based on what you were assured when you adopted the new master plan, there wouldn't be any amendments. And now it's happening. So I would ask you to vote no on this. You've heard from one of the property owners. They live there. This is their neighborhood. Have you been driven out to 70 Bear Mountain Place? I would ask you to listen to this property owner that has come forward. I would ask you to listen to us that live in South Valleys area, what we want. Thank you.
Pam Dar.
Good morning, Commissioner Hill, other commissioners. I didn't plan on talking. This is definitely not my strong knowledge, but I took it upon myself to start listening to the Planning Commission, the Affordable Housing meetings. And I went to a Zoom meeting and, you know, trying to learn. And a developer called in, and his comment to that workshop is, "Why are we you guys even bothering having this? This is already decided upon." So our opinions didn't even matter. I gave up my evening to listen to this and educate myself, only to find out, it doesn't matter. That bothered me. Then I went to an in-person meeting, and the people that are really concerned live in my area, and I understand their concerns. Our quality of life has changed. It's gone down. It's getting dirtier. People are getting ruder. The traffic's horrendous. The roads aren't keeping up with the growth. So I'm a small-town girl. I would seriously look at moving. My husband wants to stay, so I want to make the best of this, so I'm trying to participate. You guys are in a hard position because I know developers can sue. So you're kind of like both sides. Make constituents happy, make the developers not sue you. But I do think we need to step back. Something's missing. Town halls or something, because I hear it from everybody as I knock on doors, because I'm a precinct captain. People are moving. People don't like it. People are edgy. I don't see what's in it for us with what's happening. I understand growth.
Are you, are you talking about 70 Bear Mountain Place?
Yes, because that's happening to them, but it's happening everywhere. I guess that's, this is why I came up here to speak. It's not just them. And I don't mean to attack you, and I want to stay on focus, but this is everywhere. So with this decision, also think this is happening across corner to corner in our county, everywhere, and everybody's saying this. This is a prime example of people just wanting the stuff to stop. Take a moratorium, breathe for a second. This is going to ruin their quality of life of what they invested everything into. This is everywhere across the country, the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will now close the public hearing and open it up for additional deliberation from the board. Commissioner Andreola.
Can we hear from staff in terms of the public meeting response on, that was held and required? Please. Thank you. On April 24?
Good afternoon. Julie Olender with Planning and Building. They did have a neighborhood meeting. I have to look at my notes really quick. The neighborhood meeting was on April 24 at the Calling Club. There were five attendees. There were numerous questions, however, no major concerns. We also had the woman here that was represented by another woman, the attorney, I believe. There was, people that came to the Planning Commission meeting, and there were several people that spoke out or asked questions and spoke against the proposal.
Thank you.
Does that answer your questions, Commissioner?
Thank you. Any other board discussion or question? I'm not seeing any additional board questions. I will say for me, I see that this meets the findings for the master plan amendment as required, as well as the regulatory zone amendment findings required. So I will move to adopt as outlined in the staff report, looking for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any questions on that motion from the board?
No, but I wanted to just state for the record, I too find all the findings intact and appreciate the summary of the neighborhood meeting that is required by law. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Andreola. So with a motion and a second, and we take in public comment, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Chair Herman?
And that motion passes four to one with Commissioner Clark in the opposition. Thank you very much. Well, that's the end of our scheduled public hearings. We'll now move into item 15. Manager Brown.
Item 15 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Penny Brock, followed by Mark Rado.
As I've been saying all morning, we've got huge issues. There's reports that non-citizens are registering to vote. It means people that cross the borders. The American Constitution says that only an American citizen is to vote. That means providing proof of citizenship with either a birth certificate or your American naturalization papers. The Nevada Constitution says the same thing. Only an American citizen is to vote. Arizona, this was taken to court. A partial victory was won on October 22 when the U.S. Supreme Court ruled five to four to allow Arizona to enforce its law requiring proof of citizenship during voter registration. Under the ruling, election officials may reject voter registration forms without proof of citizenship. The High Court stated federal district court ruling while it awaits a hearing before the U.S. Ninth District Court of Appeals. The point is, when you go to the DMV, they say, "Do you want to register to vote?" They don't require any proof of citizenship. We wonder why our voter rolls are in such a mess. You should, all of you should be concerned about this. Our Constitution depends on the voting process. That is foundation to a free and open America. When we allow people that are not citizens to vote, that corrupts the whole system. That does not protect our Constitution. Because people that don't vote, that aren't registered, or that aren't citizens, they don't understand our system. That's why the naturalization process is a process because they have to study the Constitution. They have to understand about the process of elected officials when they go to Washington, D.C., and in fact, when they sit in our county commission. And they don't know, therefore, they haven't earned the right to be registered to vote. You, as a county commission, should be at our state legislature this next year, asking for a law that will require.
Thank you.
Mark Rado? Mark Rado?
Trust is not just handed out. And a constant theme when I'm here and when I come here, the distrust reigns. You guys have an opportunity to create trust, and, but you're not doing that. This commission is not doing that. This commission is fostering, by ambiguity, it is fostering distrust and the fear of corruption and all that. Maybe you don't believe it's happening, and you have an opportunity to just hit it out of the park to resolve it. When you insert language about, that is ambiguous, when you say, "There is no current plan," and I'm speaking specifically about the stadium, the unsolicited project that was tendered to the Open Space Commission, that was then voted unanimously no, and but was sworn to be appealed to this commission, but this commission has refused to hear it. You see, that pocket veto offers no specificity, no assurance to the people because it leaves the door wide open to just come back to the agenda when this commission could simply say there will be no stadium at South Allee's Park. Apologize for that. You are creating distrust when there doesn't need to be it. Now, this distrust has very severe effects, okay? Not only do the people, I speak to over 1,000 people in my database that have implored with me, "No on this stadium." They beg me, "Mark, what is the latest?" And I, I have to then share with them, "The latest is more ambiguity from this, from leadership, which is from you." So the damaging effects of this uncertainty are, running out of time. It is directly interfering now with my effort to build a stadium, to build fields for this community to use. Investors don't want, don't like uncertainty, but they're getting it directly from you. Please. Please, 19 seconds left. Please, this is a layup for you. The people don't want a stadium. The donors don't want it. The chamber has written to many of you saying they don't want the stadium. It is unanimous. They don't want it. But it's up to you to make them feel certain it will not happen. Assure us it will not.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move on to item 16. Manager Brown?
Item 16 is Commissioners and County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Commissions' Updates, Requests for Information, Topics for Future Agendas.
Do you have anything for us?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Vice Chair Herman. Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Andreola?
I just wanted to share, I neglected during the first part of the meeting, my deepest appreciation to the Spanish Springs cab that was held on 10/2 and everybody's efforts and really putting together from Abby Yakovin, who's CFO for Washoe County, talking about the impact of planning and development and what that means to funding and how funding works, to Michael Large, who knocked it out of the park in terms of really talking about the legal scope that everyone has in terms of whether this body or any other body has to work within. Dr. Eric Young, kudos to Dr. Eric Young, the senior planner, who actually put in perspective the history of how all of this came to be and why we have these boundaries that we have to work within. Dr. Jeremy Smith, who's the director of the Trucking Meadows Regional Planning Authority, talking about the compliance piece and the regional approach and some of the things that they've been doing. Rob Pierce, who's the chair of the Planning Commission, who spoke about when you are, like anybody, you have the framework and the legal framework and finding the findings. And even as Michael Large stated, even if you don't like something, you have to substantiate that with the legality of the findings. And then finally, Trevor Lloyd with Planning, who spoke about all of the process that actually takes place once an application is received and all of the steps before anybody or any body sees it. It's important, I think, to share that that is recorded. I would encourage anyone who wants to spend an hour of quality time to really look at that and really get a strong framework. It really is important, I think, for everyone to understand the framework which we all have to work under. I'd also like to thank the staff. Alexandra did a great job shepherding all the public comment. And certainly, we have a new board chair and a new vice chair who will be taking on that role in actually, you know, running the meeting. So it's a very exciting, the rebuilding of the cab at Spanish Springs is something we all can be proud of. And I'd like to thank everybody for all of their contributions, especially the speakers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Got a couple other items. I brought up earlier about National Public Radio and my interest in that. And, you know, one of the things that I used to look forward to is they broadcast, and I didn't live in these cities, but I just wanted to listen to how government worked. They've got a public radio station at Santa Monica City College. They've got another one in Pasadena City College. And they used to broadcast live the city council meetings from Pasadena and Santa Monica. Those were quite interesting. I'm just wondering if we could maybe have a discussion, a future agenda item, so we could have a discussion. Maybe UNR could, K-U-N-R could maybe broadcast live the county commission meetings. I think that would get some more citizens' involvement for folks that can't come to day meetings, but maybe they could listen to the radio at their leisure and listen to live broadcast of a county commission meeting. So something I thought about this morning after I heard the chair on the radio. Next, you know, we've approved, we did approve, I haven't talked much about this, the registrar of voters. We had interim registrar of voters, or registrar of voters now, or registrar voter, interim registrar of voters on some sort of leave. And I was wondering if we can get an agenda item to approve a new interim registrar of voters while this particular person is out of action during a very critical time in our country's history. I mean, this is a very contentious election year on a national level. Certainly, there's some issues locally, but I don't think any of them rise to the level of what's taking place on a national level. And here we are again with no person at the helm of the registrar of voters office. So I'd like to see that as an agenda item, get somebody that we can have somebody to up for this position to fill in on an interim basis. So I'm asking for that to be an agenda item where the commissioners get to vote on who is running the registrar of voters office. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. It is 12:08, and we are adjourned.
Is this a record?